Roll call. Stephanie. Annette?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
John?
Here.
Claudia?
Here.
Robert?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
Jonah?
Melissa?
Here.
Here.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place thereof sent to the record and the Star-Ledger newspapers, the constituent borough clerks, and the borough libraries, as well as the posting at the school district principals' offices, faculty rooms, and the board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the public school buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to a fine not to exceed $100. Thank you.
The mission of Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, passion for learning, and respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey student learning standards.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to open it up for public comments on agenda items only. Hearing none. We'll go right to the budget presentation.
All right, I will fill in for Mrs. Engel, who's not able to be here this evening for the budget presentation. I know Trudy would like me to start off by thanking the board for their participation in the budget process, and a special thanks to the Finance Committee for all the work that they did in putting in a lot of time and effort into this budget. As you know, we absorbed over a $300,000 decrease in our state aid, which represents about 11% cut to our state aid this year, which was challenging, to say the least, but we're very proud of the budget that we put before you, and especially proud that we have not cut student services by one penny. Okay, just for your information, as a point of information, our enrollment is basically steady. These are intervals of five students that you see here. You have all the years from 2016 to 2024. Our enrollment is essentially stable during all that time. There's not much transancy in our district, which is a good thing and helpful for our district as well and for budgeting numbers. By way of comparison, our 23-24 adjusted school budget is compared to our 24-25 school budget as proposed. You see the changes on the right side of the screen in our general fund, our capital outlay. The most outstanding change you will see there is represented under the grants, and what that really is representing is the fact that the ESAR money that we've been receiving from the federal government over the last several years from COVID is now ending, and that's where you see the big differential there. This is just a graphic representation of our revenues, our current revenues in the 24-25-year budget. Our budget is proposed as revenues being $40 million, $74,769. You see the majority of that comes from our local tax share, which is approximately 87%, coming from the local taxpayer, and you see the other pieces of the pie there are a couple of different other revenue sources that we have in our district, including federal sources, some tuition and our state aid numbers, and some capital reserve as well. The appropriation side, the same kind of pie chart, looking at how we are appropriating the money that we are spending in our budget. Of course, the same number that we are bringing in in revenue is what we propose to appropriate in our new budget. The majority of this, the majority piece of the pie is obviously instructional, including general and special education, but you see there are a number of other areas that are accounted for in their pieces of the pie as well in this graphic representation. Some fiscal efficiencies, which I'm sure the board is aware of, but the public at home may not be. We do belong to an insurance consortium to bring down the price of our insurance, our different kinds of insurance, health benefits, and our legally binding that we're supposed to have our regular general insurance policies. We, of course, belong to a statewide consortium to purchase internet bandwidth, as most districts do. We are part of a cooperative purchasing program for instructional supplies, for office supplies, our technology, and our special education transportation. Some of that is through Region 5, but a number of other sources as well. And of course, we participate in the E-Rate program for telecommunications and receive rebates from the federal government on a number of purchases that we have, mostly hardware, computers, and switches, and servers, and wiring. For the district, it's all covered with rebates through E-Rate, the E-Rate program. Just a quick budget overview. This 24-25 budget provides, of course, the necessary district staff and academic offerings and extracurricular programs and activities, and as well as transportation for all of our students that we are required to transport and for all of our programs. It maintains the instructional programs that we currently have and that we are planning to add in the next year, and also meets our contractual obligations with our teachers and anyone else that we have contracts with. It addresses school safety and maintains our buildings and grounds, which we have been accustomed to over the years, and of course stays within the guidelines of the New Jersey statutory state caps. The next slide will talk about the municipal share, the tax levy. You have a history here from 1920 up to the current year of the tax impact for River Edge and for Oradell residents. We are currently at 47.8% tax burden on the Oradell residents and 52.2% on River Edge. You see, it's actually very small, but you see the impact on the average assessed home in River Edge and also in Oradell based on this budget and the current tax impact that you see before you. And that concludes the presentation. There are no changes from the initially submitted budget that went to the county. It was approved from the county. It came back to us. We've made no changes since that time. So it's all information that you've already been privy to previously. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Student member report.
So I'll be reporting alone tonight because Jonah is currently coming back from a baseball game that got delayed because of the weather, because apparently it was storming up in Paskett Hills. So I'll start with the high school report. So over the past two weeks, the high school has been as busy as always. Congratulations to our robotics team on their performance at the National Robotic Tournament in Houston, Texas, from April 18th to the 20th. After completing the qualifying matches, the team earned the third seed and made it to the divisional rounds. On April 19th, Riverdale students participated in their last Hawk Day with an early assembly for all grade levels. All juniors and seniors heard from Matthew Ballas, a comedian and inspirational speaker on resiliency. All freshmen and sophomores enjoyed a program by Tom Shoemaker, who shared his story nationwide on motivation and confidence building. Congratulations to Leana Staines for her recognition in a poetry contest as a part of Ms. Silverman's creative writing class. Her poetry will be published in the American High School Poets Spring 2024 Edition. On April 25th, Ms. McGinley's AP Language and Composition classes had an open discussion about the everyday uses of rhetoric with author and rhetoric expert J. Hendrix. It was an excellent experience for students to ask questions and learn more about English language. On April 26th, the Riverdale marching band visited River Edge and Oradell elementary schools to perform for all sixth-grade classes. We can't wait for these future Hawks to get involved. For upcoming events, over the first two weeks of May, AP testing will occur for all students enrolled in an AP course. Good luck to all students preparing for their exams. And lastly, there are some exciting end-of-year senior class activities that are coming up soon with a senior class Hawaiian luau on May 16th and a senior class barbecue on May 17th. And for the middle school report, congratulations to the RDMS April Hawks Spotlight recipients. They are as follows: Sanvi Guar, Matilda Syracuse, Jake Olendorf, Daniel Lynn, Aria Advani, Sidney Larson, Sean Ensminger, and Eli Gonzalez. These students were recommended by staff members for modeling the examples of positive behavior we often talk about at RDMS. Way to go Hawks. On Friday, April 19th, PTSO generously provided students with the seventh grade, in the seventh grade with guest speaker Tim Shoemaker, to motivate students and talk about resilience and effectively handling stress. Students in the eighth grade traveled to the high school to meet with current seniors for a panel discussion and building tours. It was a great day for RDMS, and we thank Riverdale High School staff and students for volunteering their time and efforts. During the week of April 15th, the Sigma Phi Mu Club organized Mental Health Awareness Week. The objective was to spread knowledge and support for various mental illnesses that affect our school community. Throughout the week, students were taught lessons in their elective classes to increase their knowledge on these issues and showed support by wearing colors of different mental illnesses. CVH Care hosted Mental Health Jeopardy for students to learn more statistics about mental health and earn prizes. And lastly, the Environmental Club participated in the Party for the Planet at the Bergen County Zoo on Saturday, April 20th. The Party for the Planet is North America's largest Earth Day celebration with over 120 zoos and museums involved. The Environmental Club represented while sharing important information with those who showed up for the event.
Okay, my report. I just have one thing. Every year, U.S. News World reports rates the 25,000 high schools in the country, and this year, I'm proud to say that Riverdale Regional High School, their overall score was 93.5 out of 100. We rated number 11 in Bergen County. We rated number 53 in the state, and we rated 1,145 out of 25,000 in the country. So I think that's pretty good.
That's pretty good. I would agree.
And basically, that's all I have.
Me now? Ready for me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening again, everyone. Just a couple of items to piggyback on what Melissa was talking about. I took part in some of the Mental Health Awareness Week at the middle school. That was outstanding. I wanted to, she's not here tonight, but Stephanie Hartman had a lot to do with helping us to coordinate that with Danielle Casey, and I thought it was an excellent job. I have my Mental Health Awareness bracelet on, my RD1, that one of the students made for me, and it was just a great atmosphere, the culminating day especially, but throughout the entire week, just hearing students talk about how they're feeling and their mental health and being able to openly talk about that was very refreshing, and I know there was a lot of work that went into it from Stephanie, from Danielle, and from many of the staff members at the middle school. So I look forward to seeing what the high school will bring forward shortly, but it was very much a lot of fun to be part of and very much worthwhile. Our next meeting is May 13th. I've asked the robotics team to come in and do a quick little presentation for you so you can see the great work that they've done this year and why they've received the accolades they have. So we'll have that at our next meeting. I also have Mr. Delora coming in to do the AI presentation for you. So we'll have a couple of items to present to you. Just looking here, I might have to clear some of this out for the robotics people. They need a lot of room, but I'll figure that out over the next couple of weeks. I might have to bring on Dr. Houston to look at it to see what we can do. We might have to move it someplace else, but we'll figure that out. I want you to see it, and I want to see it myself because I have not seen it except for on TV. I mentioned last meeting that we are gearing up for our annual standardized testing. Melissa was talking about that a little bit. That actually has begun in this week with our science testing being, taking place at the middle school. May will be much busier as we approach May at the end of this week with AP testing, as Melissa mentioned, at the high school, and all of our NJSLA testing is grade seven, eight, and nine, and also science in grade 11. So a lot going on in the next month, as it is here in Riverdale, but in any public school in New Jersey. This week, just a reminder to the board members, you're all invited. Of course, we have our honor society inductions taking place on May 1st. This is this Wednesday in the courtyard of the high school here, which I'm very excited to see. I actually saw it for the first time. I realized I had not been in the courtyard yet until the other day. It's very nice. It's very nice, and we should use it more, I think, because it's very impressive. I haven't actually been out there until a couple of days ago. It was a nice day, and I went out, and it was the Bring Your Child to Work Day, and we had some of the kids out there, so I went out to see them. I said, "This is really nice. We should use this more." So A+ to Riverdale on having that, but we'll be using that area for our inductions for the many honor societies that we have here at Riverdale. So I'm excited to see that. Board members are, of course, invited, and any parents at home of our many inductees, please, you're welcome here as well. We would love to see you.
What time is this?
It is at 6 o'clock. There's kind of like a get-together, and then the actual ceremony starts at 7:00.
You decided to move it from the, who came up with the idea of moving it to the courtyard, just out of curiosity?
Me?
Okay.
I think.
No, because I've never seen it done there before, which is, it's usually in the auditorium, that's why I was asking, but that's great.
Since we started, like, they cleaned it up and leave.
We used it for the prom. I think they want to use it more.
I mean, we've been trying to use it.
Yeah, so I think, I think it's a great option.
It's always been, it's always been an underutilized.
I said it's part of what makes Riverdale better.
Right, that's what makes us better. We have a courtyard.
All right, that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay. Committee reports. Budget and finance?
No meeting?
Okay. Facilities? Community relations and technology?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Curriculum?
Nothing new to report at this time.
Okay. Policy and government?
I'm just going to tail them with everybody else. Nothing to report. There you go.
We do have meetings. We have a policy coming up in June, I think.
Yes, we do, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'd like to move on all designated with asterisks on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, John. Any questions?
Okay, roll call.
Here now?
Yep. John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes. Okay. Resignation and retirements. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board accept with regret the resignation due to retirement of teacher of special education, Maureen Keel, effective June 30th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, John. Any questions?
John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes, I hope she enjoys her time.
And Alan?
Yes.
It's recommended by the superintendent that the board accept with regret the resignation to retirement of teacher of English, Brian Wright, effective June 30th, 2024.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Okay, I'll second. I'm watching the students.
John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes, I wish him well.
Alan?
Yes.
Eight I.
Okay. 12A. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the 2024-2025 board goals. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, John. Thank you, Doug. Any questions?
John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Eight I.
13D. 13G. Be it resolved to approve a school district final budget for the 2024-2025 school year for submission to the Executive County Superintendent's Office. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, and I want to commend the administration for getting through a very tough year, putting a greater agenda, I mean, budget for us.
Thanks, John. I have a second. Any questions? Hearing none. John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Eight I.
Okay, 13H. It is recommended by the superintendent and board secretary It is recommended by the superintendent and board secretary that the board approve the schedule of tax levy payments for the 2024-2025 school year as follows. River Edge Borough, total $18,671,535, and Oradell Borough, $17,142,852. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, John. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Doug. Any questions?
John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Eight eye.
13L. Whereas the Riverdale Regional School District Board of Education advertised for bids for the gymnasium flooring abatement project. Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions?
John?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Eight eye.
Old business, new business.
Just one item under old business because Mr. Pepe just reached out to me to tell me, to correct me, that the ceremony is actually in the auditorium, but the reception is in the courtyard. So you have a principal who's home watching the meeting. He couldn't come here to watch it, but I guess he's sitting in home watching. So you got your answer in real time.
I swear to God, in my wheelchair training, I'm like, where is everybody going?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock in the.
Six o'clock reception.
We never, I don't remember ever having reception before.
No, we've had a reception, yeah. You probably were coming from the city and. No, yeah. Yeah. For national, yeah. You probably would like coming from the city and just meeting.
I guess I was only invited to the auditorium and my family, but you're the.
Any other old business? Anything for forward discussion? I just have one thing. Have we reached any dates yet for the retreat that we had talked about?
No, I'm going to see Matt Lee at my meeting this week, and I'm going to propose some ideas for him and bring that back to the board hopefully before our May meeting. Well, before that, but officially at our May meeting.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to open it up for public comments.
You guys all looked stunned out there when we were reading something earlier. Phones came out, you guys were like, oh, shocking.
He's a Jet fan, don't listen to him.
Okay. Hearing no comments from the public. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.